Jan. Are you?
Yeah, I thought I was in Florida. Right? What's going to be? Oh, well, what's? Oh, don't do that. Yeah. But on the, on the, um, which is looking, are you looking? Just look at them. There's no error.
It's just. She's a lot lower. And one more. We do a passage. Local. Um. We don't have an associate today that will be serving. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? You know, any other things, any amendments? Does anybody have anything?
Okay.
Yes.
No worshiping. Or.
Okay. We won't care. So I'll try to speed up. Um, our next thing on the agenda is the elections with our chairman, which is vice chairman and a secretary for the next year. So.
Uh, I know it's the same office that would. That we had last year, the bound over and there won't be the floor this year. Not even a key for chairman, uh, state of the law chairman. Secretary is. Earned. Good.
You want a second?
Sure.
So. You don't know? Aye. We don't even know who's voting by Mary view. A comment. Bring her out.
Go.
She can't hear.
He's a dead woman. And I want to know where the loud on home. If she can hear anyone.
She can't hear us.
No, you can hear him. She's all. She hold it back.
The audio is cutting in and out. And we will.
It doesn't like. I have a meeting. He wasn't here, so he got to look at the show.
Senator Knight served the Republican chairman. Of the.
He's not that easy. Oh, it's a keeper and say, oh. Sounds good. Yeah. Like the. Yeah, that'd be a nice surprise.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Make a motion that we approve. Yes.
They moved the side of the command to be approved. They're very difficult to say in my mind.
Hi. You can.
There. Old business. Patrick County told me revolution.
I have sent to the, um, legal paper notice that the commissioner will, as part of a regular meeting, hold a hearing at nine thirty on March sixth of twenty twenty four. And the commissioner in the boardroom to discuss or review the recommended amendments changes to the best counties on the station.
And it'll be in the boardroom?
It will be in the boardroom or in the whole animal's building?
Okay.
Me?
Yeah, okay. They, they don't want to walk over here. Well, Wednesday, that would be important.
Yeah. Then get the point.
Okay, any other old business? I, I brought back some questions and I haven't done anything negative about whole essentials, so. Let's see what happens. Will people sort? Um, I hope in America, be there to explain anything, if you have questions on.
What day is that?
Wednesday.
It's March, March sixth.
March sixth.
It's next month. March third, sixth.
And sixth.
March sixth.
March sixth. What we come for, for time?
I'm ready.
Okay. Any more old business? If there is none, go on to new business. Uh. Think we'd like to know if the, you know, men is preferring ignoring to get through our agenda today, from the public comment time to five minutes of the person. And, uh, just a reminder to the audience that there's no back and forth discussion between the public and the advocate. All, all comments are made to the planning commission. And, uh, our presentation is made to the planning commission. So the planning commission can and come to a decision. Okay. Here it is for Johnston. Is somebody here for me? Step up to the podium, please. And.
Initial statement.
Huh?
This is very fancy. Uh, I'm not used to this.
Your name, enter.
My name is Brian Johnston. So.
Well, maybe we didn't read what's in your statement. Um, this would kind of give us an idea as to why you're doing it. Yeah. You're wanting to start and start your round.
Uh, I initially started looking for, uh, dark sky communities. When I was in Australia, I found one and it was inspired me. And as I came around the, uh, state of Colorado, I found Westwood. Wow, this is magical. And it's also a dark sky community. So I thought I lived in Summit County, uh, so it would be a while before I, uh, went down here. Uh, it would be nice to be able to let other people from other states see what Westwood is like. That's pretty good.
Uh. Would, received any letter?
We had one letter of opposition that was from an adjoining neighbor. Um. There is, it was from, do I say it was? I'm not having either my son did it, sorry. Um, it's from Barco over ranch. They are adjoining neighbors. Their main concern that was that it was rotating neighbors. It's not appealing and out of character for the neighborhood.
Everyone that.
No, it was. Let's say I was a little bit of a. Yeah. Probably the other way.
What's one other?
Thank you. The bar coast for ranch.
Okay.
Okay, are there any comments for the audience? None, any questions for your plan? Bill?
Sir, how long will you hold the line?
I voted back on September fifteenth last year.
Okay. Has it stayed there?
I have. It's wonderful.
Are the property boundaries? Perked or, you know, well marked?
Yeah, they're fenced right around it.
On, on the, uh, on the flat map that I see, the driveway, does it go through that park or ranch to get to your house?
Which ranch is that one?
Uh, one of your, uh, do you have easement to go through?
Yes. Yes, there's two gates there with a, um, a code on them. So the neighbor above me, following the other day and requested that make sure that the gates do close because he has horses in it. I said, if I could put that in the grills, but it might be a problem.
And the easement is all the table private, correct?
I am not quite sure about who the property is, but I know the neighbor owns it.
It comes off of analog road. Would that be correct here?
Uh, that's county road three twenty three.
Yeah.
Is that the one through here with the two gates?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the.
This is the.
One.
The one that we actually got to see.
We got to see. Did you like it?
We're going to get it.
Yeah. Because I'll be.
The side is the one that one.
There's problems.
Yes. Do they have any comments?
Well, I'm looking about common.
I'm pretty much suggestions, sir. Um. I think you have to put a better sign up of your address. Um. But you have to, you have to, there was two, the van boxes on the road. And the, I think, many days of, uh, walls developed. And you know, that was there, which I already put in there.
Right.
And then, but we had to ask, you know, several people where this was.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then, and then you can see on, on the fence, those, um, you see that was signed up one of the languages of all. Some kind of fool.
Right, the neighbors above me, once again, they want to do a plaque like the front fence. Not the, you know, where the arch is. They want to, they do a plaque for every one of their neighbors. So it's, it's about so by so.
Where are they from? Why don't they do that?
I guess when I asked them to, um, once we get through this, because I know where it is, so, um, I don't need that, but uh, I understand that the tourists will need that, um, so we'll, it feels in compliance with the others and, uh, that's, but, you know, easy to read.
What I did notice is the house of them still, sort of, it's kind of built up, right? You had to walk the stairway to get the front door, right?
Yes.
Uh, when I'm looking at your, your upper floor, you've got evacuation with arrows pointing to the windows. That's what I'm seeing here.
Right, that's what I was telling.
So they, that's about a twenty foot drop out there. But they jump out the window, there's fire up there, they jump out the window. They might survive.
I hope so.
Well, I hope so too. Um. So do you, but I don't see any fire extinguishers on any of, any of your mapping here.
Uh, I didn't take those, put them on there, but I do have pictures of the fire extinguisher. It's one on the front door and one on the back door.
I can say, I was getting more fun.
You seeing that?
Yeah, yeah, here this is out of the wall. Our extinguisher, fire extinguisher. With the X six four stairs, I mean, that was a sight.
Okay. Been a lot of work since. Too long. So you got to go through the stairway exactly, back step. On your arrow, they're pointing out, I guess, let's say this is north and you've got south. And the other four is upside down with the arrow pointing with both windows or door, there's a door there, is the only one in the doors?
Uh, which one? The upstairs?
You know, the back, the other floor kind of goes upside down. And you have arrows pointing toward that other floor. Is that a door? There's a door there.
Which was gender?
There's, well, you got, you got arrow pointing to, I guess, over the windows?
Yeah, it windows. There's two doors, one on each end of the house. And there's two sets of steps.
And then where does that door go to? The other door, the other one set of steps, what's that go to?
That goes into the barn.
That, that, that's just outside?
Yeah. Yeah, it's attached to the house.
Do you have evacuation map? If someone had to get out of there or anyway, that they wouldn't know which way to go, I guess. I know they don't move towards the gates, but.
You may, well, there's maybe with the fire evacuation. You want for that before and.
Well, I know, what about the ultimate, we always require an evacuation to get out of the box?
Oh, okay. Oh, right. I didn't send something in.
I know there's only one way in, one way out.
That's right.
There's no added, well, kiss, keep it simple stupid.
Right.
Because, because you're dealing with individuals that have, that come from the cities and they're not used to anything out here. You want to make it as simple as possible so a little bit of individuals understand that that is fire extinguisher there. And it's just simple. And it's just simple.
Right.
I mean, I've seen the place and I'm sure it would use the vertical angle.
Yeah.
But the head office, their house is the closest to your house.
Yeah, there's right at that.
Have they been attended?
Can't think so. And Dave was the one who called me the other day and asked me to make sure that I put in my rules and regulations that whoever, including myself, goes in through the gates, make sure the gates actually close and we sort of get out. But I'm happy to comply with.
We have had problems in the county where I've had some reinforcements a couple of months ago. I'm just throwing that out.
In your, in your information, additional rules, you have contact information. I didn't see that.
It's certainly, um, for my husband. My son does the property management. So it's Mike's property managing. I'll see it.
He's going through anybody else.
Just go ahead and carry it.
So.
Need to have contact information for for your property manager on your, on your rules? So if somebody had a problem, they know where to call?
Right, I can do that. And with the fire evacuation map, I did ask back in December for a sample, which was never sent to me. Um, so I'm happy to comply for that concept. Yeah, I just need to understand whether it need to be Google Maps or just keep it simple.
Any other questions for evacuation?
Yeah. Uh, this, I'm welcome. I noticed you have a lot of firewood. And that firewood between the, you have a horn that went, it's moving there.
Yeah.
There were a lot of firewood, then there were pallets. And you have, they're all sort of polyethylene.
Yeah.
Is that normal?
I don't know, I inherited it, so.
It, it looks like the shit, you know, some of the firewood is shit in.
I wouldn't have a clue, that, that was there when I bought the property. So I just left it there because there is a wood stove there, so there's a lot of firewood there.
So the pallets are new, or you start, they were shipped in, you bought the property and just sitting there with plastic fill around?
Uh, I, I don't know what, what his plans were for that, that was not mine.
Okay.
And I don't think you need that much wood because there's, uh, when you caught force air in the, in the house, so to use the fireplace is most probably that's not on board these days. But I haven't moved any of that stuff because I don't know what to do with it, to be honest. You want some firewood?
Any notes for the fire information? Yeah.
I put the plan the planning permission recommended to the county commissioners to approve the fact that that I knew of that property.
I would like some conditions with that though.
That's fine, subject to condition.
Subject to the condition.
Okay, that's my wish.
Okay, what would your conditions be?
Better address sign, whether that be a plaque or some, some type of, so you know you're at the right property. Were we requiring, uh, something to be seen at night or? I think you have to see it.
A reflective address.
Reflective address property.
Right, and this, this is the kind of reflective that I bought. So it was actually on the fence, not the fence with a sign with the missing letter. It was over another, when you first drive in.
It was reflective, but it's kind of hard to tell.
Yeah, but it steps, well, it's a package list.
It stands out and they even started that.
That's what they told me.
Anything else, Carol?
Yes, contact information in your rules, regulations for your safety in property, the decontact information there. A little bit better on your evacuation. Like I said, I'm sitting here looking at this, we saw the house. I still didn't know those were fire extinguishers, shame on me. But, you know, there again, you got to look at this to think of old ten year old kids looking at it. And so, okay, well, that's a bad, that, that's a fire protection. I'm not comparing myself to ten year old kid, but the best thing that's against us.
The fire extinguisher is the right inside the door. There's one on the one end and the other one is on the other end, as you walk in, that's where the fire extinguishers are.
We didn't get to go in the house, we're at the outside.
Right.
Um, I would say, the owners are being evacuation improvement on its plans to make them more efficient. So that's, that's an issue there.
I have a question for you, do you have a sample that you can give me? Because I can do whatever I need to do.
P and Z office does have.
I will send you a sample. She did or not?
No, she did.
Not here, but I will send it to you as the email address on your, it's in the email address to send that to, sir.
That's it. It's grand, five hundred and seventy.
Got it, yeah.
So.
Anything else, sir?
No, what is that, three, that's improved address sign, contact information in the rules, uh, more improved evacuation sign, that's three. That's really all I saw. I mean, the wood's just a factor out there. The only issue you're going to have to, if you've got wood sitting out there, if, if I'm a stranger and I'm on the grass, wood will put in fireplace and do something, you might want figure out something to do with that, otherwise you're going to be at a fireplace, hopefully.
Right, where I can take the fireplace out.
And so you're going to put that in rules with no fires.
Right.
That's not in here. That's all.
No fires outside?
Well, with all that wood, you've got a fire outside, you've got a problem with burning a whole county. And there's a lot, there's a lot of wood.
Yeah.
Or you take a guy smoking a cigarette, he's out there, he goes with his butt, it's going riding on you, it's going whoosh.
Yeah, but we make a rule that don't smoke cigarettes.
Well, it's not in here.
No, we could put it in there.
How you keep somebody from smoking a cigarette out of one, that's a hard.
Sneaky people. Anything else, sir?
No, I think those three or four items would be, we'd want to rethink those.
I think we get, I don't know, just to get a deal with the office. Uh, with the, with the, with the, yes. You have a copy of of it, she come in the, the door. Okay, let me, let me check that here, leave me to get a picture of the so I can figure.
Yeah, we're, we're, we will follow up on that.
Okay, so I hear second, the bill of motion that we recommend commissioners that it be approved with their own conditions.
Or condition, second.
There.
Are those divisions clear? Are they clear?
I have, um, added evacuation map, trying to send him out an example of and property management content, that's an issue for the house rules. Sorry, I'm reading when I was here, sorry.
Fire evacuation map.
And the fire evacuation map a little bit clearer. And then I put down firewood, kind of plain on the firewood.
They're asking another question. I mean, we're emoting. Go ahead, is, is your, is your manager here locally?
That's Dave's son.
He's here locally?
Yeah, he used to work for the county and I think he's now gone back into contracting, so that's what he does.
Okay.
Okay, uh, to be moved in second. All favor. You can write that. Okay, motion carries, nine eight reasons. Uh, Justin. Um, I vote aye because I think the property location is a decent place. Uh, there are very low opposition. And, uh, I think it'll be a good, uh, it'll be approved to the area. Yeah.
Uh, I made a motion to accept them, voted aye. Uh, it's because of the lot size, it's a nice, they lot. Uh, they didn't snuggle how close to the neighborhood, how thoughtful, but I don't think it's great on that deal, but, uh, but now there's no, no more optimization.
Fire. Lot size bids, as far as county rules in and out. Good access coming in now. Get everything longer as far as that patient.
Uh, with the changes to the vision, I guess, I think it would be changed for the people. And I was, I know this video, the fact, fact is, um, dark guys, you know, the, I mean, who's something even pointing, uh, the, that, that, I felt, they know that you're
There.
A voting yes, so there was all one opposition, but they don't appear to be anywhere around this gentleman's property. Uh, it's right on the main road, three twenty, and you just go right on that gate, you're right there. You are passing over through two gates. That, that is a little concerning, but it didn't appear that those individuals had a concern about that, then on that, those parts of it. So, you know, I'd just like to see a little bit cleaner of that, of my application, but what's, what the residents are going to see when they're and that's why I want to do this.
I voted aye, uh, on the property, so I have to make more other that's yards around it. And we clean up, clean up the rules, get the property manager's address and phone number on there. And with the other provisions, uh, I think it would be a good location. One thing I would say was if you probably want to put up a sign that says, keep these gates closed. If they know that not many horses get out.
Mm-hmm, good idea. Should we add another suggestion?
Uh, just. Probably want to put up a sign. People are not ready to go up close and get.
The good thing about those gates is they're automatic. But Dave has said sometimes to don't close, but forget off from the horses, is about that. So we want to make sure that things happy and the horses are happy. I will say this also, I had done Airbnb before in Summit County before the pandemic and we were super host. So we, our mission is to give the people the best experience they can get. We done? Thank you, sir, thank you.
Okay, our next item is the power, the short term, I don't remember. To represent.
Yes, yes.
Can I talk to say your name, please?
Sure, thank you.
Now, my name is Martin Cowell, and I'm from Wichita, Kansas, is my wife. I have a brother, Dan Cowell, that lives in Rosita Hills. Uh, his wife Tina works in the community, they lived here for years. And, um, my brother Tim Cowell is in Garden City. Uh, we three brothers, uh, inherited, uh, our mom's cabin, she bought it.
Excuse me, I confused myself with this.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have, they're employees of mine.
Oh, I think I know what you mean. We were just talking to her. So, uh, back in ninety-one, my mother, uh, bought this cabin, uh, on Rosita Road and, um, and came out here for thirty years and, uh, our family, of course, been out there many, many times for the last uh, thirty years. My brother Dan moved around the corner, um, uh, back in ninety-two, ninety-three, and started his contracting business. And, uh, we, we love the property, we lived to come out here, um, but it's only being used about ten percent of the time with three hundred and sixty days out of the year. Uh, my mom passed away two years ago and since then, uh, you know, our family's been using it about less than thirty days out of the year, so it's, it's, it's empty about ninety percent of the time. And, uh, we would like to, uh, uh, get a short term rental application so we can, uh, uh, help with the revenues and, uh, for us to cover the expenses we have, which aren't great, but they're there. And, uh, to see other people use the cabin, they know that'll help bring people out here. Uh, my brother Dan and Tina, they will keep a close eye on it, since they're just right around the corner. Um, the cabin is like three properties down from the cemetery and my brother Dan is around the corner uh, from the cemetery. And, uh, so, um, we, uh, learned about this application process in November and submitted the application at that time. And, uh, did the cabin rules while we were out there visiting in November. And, and listening to the questions and comments, I'm not sure. I have everything in the cabin rules for evacuation map that I, that I should have, but we'd be glad to improve those. We do have two fire extinguishers in the unit, I sent pictures to, to Delina to confirm that. Um, we do have, uh, uh, when you, on the evacuation map, when you get out of the, the windows, if you can't get out the front door, you can get out the side windows and, and it's not a long drop to the ground. And I think you could probably get out without, uh, uh, without trouble at all if that was the case. So they were like four or five feet probably down to the ground, I would get estimated. And, uh, we do have firewood outside, we have a wood stove on the inside, we always use the wood stove. Um, we did prohibit smoking on the property. Uh, we do have a, a place that the family uses for, to roast pot dog, we put firewood in this, uh, rocked fire pit, which is, uh, to the side of the cabin, away from the cabin. And it's been, uh, my nephew Tabor Powell that's down here for many years, worked at Ace Hardware. He, uh, has far proved that area pretty well, uh, he still comes out here. Um, so, um, so we're just hoping that we, we've done everything you would like us to do. And if not, we'd be glad to, to, to make whatever improvements are needed. We did apply for a reflective, green reflective sign. It, the sign is on the mailbox pretty clearly, the, the address on Rosita Road. But we, we sent that into the, our department auxiliary, I think it was, in November. And we haven't heard back from them, maybe, maybe it's sitting over in the fire station and they finished it. But I don't know if they finished it or if they're waiting on approval or what, but we will put up a green reflective sign on the, uh, the driveway that comes off of Rosita Road. It sits back from the road a little bit. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thirty-nine person.
Yeah. There, the first one is from J D Henry, he is an adjoining neighbor and a year round resident. He says he's not completely opposed to the short term rental, but he does have some concerns. His number one concern, just to summarize, is that it's a two bedroom septic. And renters often bring in more than they say, than is allowed on the website for them. And renters often bring in more than they say than is allowed on the website for them to bring in. His main concern with that septic is that there's an, um, Artesian spring that starts in the area of your property. I believe, if memory serves me correct in reading the letter, it's on the west side. Um, and that Artesian spring runs through that your property on into his. He's concerned that if there's more occupants than the septic can handle, that it will compromise the Artesian spring. Uh, his other concern is heavy vegetation in the area, concerns of renters starting fires in the fire pit or fire ring. Concerns about renters driving ATVs in the area of the, um, and specifically in the area of the Rosita Cemetery. Apparently, they have had issues with, um, renters and other STRs in the Rosita area driving their ATVs onto the, into the cemetery and damaging the cemetery there, plots and markers and things like that, that they, it was so bad for a little while, they had to gate off the cemetery. That's from J D. Uh, the Thorntons, not a direct adjoining landowner, but they're three hundred, within the three hundred yard limit. Um, out of county, they have an out-of-county mailing address, making the assumption that they're not a full-time resident. Their concerns are a small parcel open to trespassing. They're concerned about liability if someone were to get hurt in the process of trespassing onto that property, um, no enforcement of the STR rules. They're concerned about noise and increased traffic, pets, and campfires. This third one is the Furies. They're adjoining neighbors. They are year-round resident and they are in support of the short-term rental.
Yeah, could I respond to some of those, uh, concerns?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, we've not been renting the property. Uh, uh, our grandkids came out with my uh, son-in-law and his wife, and he brought ATVs for the kids to play with, and they went around the house. Um, and and they were supervised by everybody and they did not go up to the cemetery. We, they did not cause any damage in the cemetery because they did not leave. They just went around the cabin. Um, secondly, and and we haven't had renters there. We had family there. Um, so, uh, secondly, the, um, the, I'm not aware of the Artesian spring and the situation with that. Do you have a water well property or a plumbing? Um, uh, not aware of any concerns with interfering with that. Um, the, um, and, uh, there is, uh, the, in this, in the spring and summer, the brush does grow, but we can mow that. Uh, it didn't seem to be necessary, but the last time we were here and we can, we should come out in July and in November. Uh, my brother Dan lives around the corner and so. Uh, well, like I said, we we want to keep that, this is our family, this is a gem for our family, so we certainly want to keep the place safe, looking good. Uh, so when we come out, the few weeks of the year, the different children and grandchildren and nieces and nephews come out, that it's that it's, uh, everything we'd like it to be, so we certainly want to keep it. Uh, uh, whatever needs to be done to keep it up properly. Um, so I think that addresses those concerns.
And let me just make clear that if I stated that the ATV issues were with him, that was not the intent of what I was saying. It was other STRs in the area that they had concerns with. That was a.
Okay, yeah, good. We didn't, we did have Sarah Smith one time that up the road take a solo deal through her grounds. We did, but she didn't cause any damage.
Okay, is there any public comments?
No, I got.
Yes.
Yes.
That appears to name.
My name is Randall Cuff. I'm representing, um, Bernadette Johnson, who has property adjacent. And, um, um, Alvin, which is very neighbors, and we're not here to object. We're just, um, wanted to raise some of those same concerns that were just mentioned because we we're not there all the time, but we have noticed sometimes there's tracks on our feed and there's, looks like people have gotten into the little shed and everything else, so. And then the other side, that's a short-term or vacation, whatever you want to call it. And there's been some issues where there's been too many people there and neighbors have complained that it's only supposed to be a certain amount of people there, so we wouldn't want to see that happen. But what really makes us feel good is there's a family member in the neighborhood. And that's kind of lays all concerns for us. So thank you very much.
Any further comments? Not any questions. Why?
Well, I just, uh, just have a few things. Some of these issues hurt, neither the common sense and easy to handle. But I see that on on the on the application, and I understand why not. But it's, are you a member of the website, do you have you for Airbnb and you put not yet?
Right.
And I'm sure that's because you're waiting to see whether or not you're approved.
Yes, we were planning to go through Vacasa, if you're familiar with them. And we sort of contacted them and we're just on hold.
Well, that's a really good thing, because then if if rules are violated, then they can they've kind of got teeth in their bite and shut them down. See what I'm saying?
Yes.
So the the septic is always a concern. And so that would be like a point of emphasis on, you know, allowing interest and making sure that there's only four maximum for people. You know, because of the second, two bedroom or people being able to be in there.
Okay.
And, uh, and you might help speak to that better on the number of people, but because the septic is two bedroom set.
And I say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, my concern, to be real honest, is the application that was sent in originally said three point five bedrooms.
Yeah.
Um, and I believe six or something, I think six people.
Yeah.
Um, I did not see that until I was going through everything. It was snowing on. Um, I was not able to question Delena about what her conversation was with you in regards to that.
Yes.
I noticed it widened out. I'm in JD's concern, um, that would be my concern as well. If there's extra beds, bunk beds, whatever, there and people have a tendency to bring in more people renters than what you say is open, the place is open to you. So I don't know how you would want, how your plans are to monitor that.
Okay, well, uh, first of all, the reason I put three and a half bedrooms initially is because you, on the main level, we have a master bedroom that sleeps two and then a back bedroom that sleeps one. Um, and and then we have a loft. You go upstairs to the loft. And we have a bed up there that, um, we always have kids or grandkids stay in, and we have three smaller beds for for their kids. So, uh, we were there, uh, July with our, uh, son or our our daughter, our son-in-law, and there are three kids. So there was the daughter and then there are five. There was seven. So it sleeps seven comfortably, um. And but but if we're limited by law, then we're limited. I didn't realize that. And then Delena called me and said there was a septic tank rule. It does have two what you would call official bedrooms, uh, because of the doors and everything, but the lot that does sleep, uh, five people comfortably with the bedding up there.
And your septic is a fairly older septic.
Okay.
Just for your knowledge and, um, reviewing it, it was put in, we just looked at it like here. So it's under the normal size that we recommend today. If if you were to come in and put a septic, a thousand gallon tank, which is what you have for two bedrooms, it's smaller than what I would recommend today, the field, the leach field. So if there's more people coming in there than can have been four, that could potentially overload that septic system. So that's the concern.
Thank you.
Anyway, moving on, that was the four we were, you know, county goes right there, everything right, you can't control those on the center. Just don't exude any grades, you know.
We haven't done that in years.
It's my opinion. I think, you know, it's just. Or what's going in there. The fire pit, I mean, everybody's sensitive around here because in the last fifteen years, in about twenty-five, twenty-eight mile radius, so we've burned two hundred and twenty thousand acres. So the fire pit, you know, on recognition of that not being used by guests is going to be, uh, hurting more.
Okay.
And, you know, fireplace inside, that's what's careful, keep that out. But I would just say that those are just a few concerns, but booking up with Airbnb or or what you said would be.
Yeah.
Are are really able to help control, you know, numbers, rules, stuff.
Okay.
And I know you're waiting till.
Yeah, we've been in touch just recently, three times, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is your lot fenced?
It is not fenced.
How are your guests to know when they are calling your property?
Well, um, that's a good question. I guess we'll need to, we'll make make a diagram that shows um, where the property line is, because you can go so far in front of the driveway where that little uh, pond, it looks like a pond, but it isn't. It just holds water, uh, in case of a fast rain. And then to the, uh, uphill a little bit into the north towards the cemetery, there's a line up there. We can, we can put that on the diagram and and measure it out in in yards or feet.
Well, I, it it really would be good if you could, in some way, mark where the corner is that.
Oh, the corners are marked, yeah. We have corner stakes, uh, flags, yeah. We can mark them. We could put more flags in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh.
Bill.
Okay, I'm thinking out loud, adjusted a little bit, says this is a very small lot. They've had problems with small lots before. Can we require it to be fenced?
Okay, so it's not a small.
Yes.
Uh, it's not a small set of lots. My mom purchased three surrounding lots, so she's got, um, it's not just the lot that the house is on. She she purchased and we own the lot in front of her and two lots behind her. So it's a larger area than just the lot that the house is on.
So what is the correct number of acres?
Um, four.
It doesn't have to be larger than two acres.
It's like. It's like four or five blocks that she bought. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know that figure, but it's the.
Oh, yeah.
It's it's.
Yeah, it's a long way around, two, four, three, twenty-eight, that's.
Yeah, yes.
Could be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight flats.
So is it so Dick Powell, the next lot, old? Yes, we. Your brother, is that your brother? No, my brother, he he lives around the corner. But that's all my mom bought. Uh, boy, that land was a lot cheaper then than it is now. But in ninety-one and ninety-two, she 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 bought the lot that houses on, and then she bought the lot in front of her and the lot two lots behind her because she didn't want anybody building, um, close to her so that we've got, uh, quite a perimeter there, including a baseball field behind the house that kids played in a few times.
Well, I I'm confused as to what the application's for. If it's for more than two acres, we need to know how much more it is. And we need. I think.
I think, I think if we do the application for those two acres, I I think part of what brought this in was required.
Well, I haven't backed off of that yet.
Well, I know you have, but or one of those, one of those land or the boundaries lots would be to a lot that they own, right? So.
So the second panel lot is where the son, your brother lives?
No, he he lives, you you have to go up the road and take the first right and then go down to the next corner.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think they have them all the way around the home. So when it comes into fencing, basically, you just want to fence Henry's side if you were to insist on putting fencing.
Hendricks?
Still, but.
Still, no, no.
Right.
Yeah.
That it's a lot of fencing, I would think.
Well, I mean, if if there wasn't fencing, maybe maybe property boundary markers.
Yes.
Very, very difficult.
We can do that.
Pretty complex.
Yeah, we had stakes up and sometimes with the snows, they get they rot or get torn down or something, pushed down. But, yeah, we certainly can do that because we we want the, our tenants to, you know, if they want to walk around the cabin and take a walk in the woods that we have, then that's fine with us. There's nothing to hurt anything.
You just don't want your tenants knowing that they're trespassing because they're being shy.
That would be good.
That would, that's not.
Yes.
That does happen in the cabin.
Oh, I got it. Okay. Well, I assume you need for better staking, then we can do that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't believe we're natural. I mean, even even rocks, Paul.
Uh huh.
That that's natural, but it looks unnatural.
Yeah.
I don't know, you're back, you're frosting in something, still over in state there because maybe you have a ten-year-old boy and he's walking and not watching, he would get that steak right in his face.
Yeah, so I think that's my, yeah.
And if a natural lock or big lock or something that's just, how'd that get there? Well, that's bad.
That's a great idea.
It just looks better.
Yes, yeah.
That's what we're all after is nature.
Yeah, that's.
I hate bringing the city here because it's coming. We're trying, I want to.
What?
Anything else?
No, um, they can't exceed, if it's a, if it's a two-bedroom septic, they either have to upgrade their septic system or change their permit and limit it to four people per year.
The permit has been changed to four.
To four? Okay, so that's, that's the other.
Okay, another question, two final questions.
Their, my concern is the gentleman mentioned the offer for whatever that is that he thought about.
Yeah. A piece of spring there, some underground water.
They've got a little septic tank. Nineteen eighty-eight, they didn't build those as well as they are today. Uh, my my concern is there, even with your own family, you have eight to ten people. You need to wait for it to fail. Yeah, you need to wait for it to fail.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the Artesian spring is compared to the septic tank, but.
Looking from the stereo, it's going to be just by reading topography, I would say it's really close to his his rock in my direction, which would be west of you. And it's more likely underground, but we know Enrich, so he's lived there a long time. So he would have seen it in weather years where he might have had a had some of the spring, but we then survive that it's more likely underground, you don't know, you don't know.
No, it is, first of all.
But you already have a septic, you already have a septic tank, it's already functioning, that springs there, it's all engineered. It's no worse. JD's concern is an overabundance of use to that leach field and septic that then, you know, obviously could affect that water supply in a negative way, right? Would you look long to the all type of.
Right, yeah, we would, yeah. We don't want that expense, but, so I appreciate that help on that.
Good. How long's it been since you, uh, had that septic tank cleaned?
The brothers handle that. I don't, I'm a lawyer. They're the ones that, construction.
The septic tank is worth it, Dr. We don't touch it.
Yeah.
Because it's doing its job. Because it's doing its job, it's full of bacteria, it should be full, it always should be full. And it's doing, and it's doing its job, if you have a pump septic tank, then you need to start looking at leach field issues. Otherwise, leave if the things, if the thing is working, leave, let on it and don't do nothing.
Yeah, but. They, they, my brother Dan and my nephew Tabor, who lived out here for ten, fifteen years, but. I would rely on them for help with that, um, but, but I appreciate the information.
Right, there.
Well, see, if I had a short term rental, I'd have less people running the family.
We'll stay at that, anything else? Well, I have. Have a decent one. Okay, on your cabin rules, it says upon departure, turn off the brakes through the water. Okay, but that's the doctrine rules, it doesn't say that when you come in, you better turn on the brakes, because the oil will pump, or you're not gonna have to be watching.
You know, my, that's because I was gonna have my brother Dan do that.
Sort of be on.
Yeah, they, they, they come over whenever people come, turn on the baseboard heats, the electricity.
So your caretaker is not gonna do that for you?
Yes, and that.
Okay.
And the water one.
You also need to have. On your rules, you need our contact information for him. So when he was going to work at Home Tank.
And. We wrote that on the application, but didn't get it on that rules.
That's a good idea. Where was the garbage can?
Well, we. Okay, we did have a dumpster that we rented that was on the driveway. Um, but the way we've been doing it is the way my mom started doing it, and we put them in plastic bags and closet under the stairs and then you take them down. Pay two dollars at the, at the dump.
Yeah, I was gonna dump.
And you're real close to that. Yeah, so is that what these, that's what it says here, do, put the, that's what that means to. Yeah, we.
All your own trash.
We don't want trash on the porch, my, back in ninety-five, my mom made the paper. Where a bear, she had a suburban that she put trash in. And the bear came and crawled. Over the top of the suburban, peeled back the windshield and went through the suburban to get the trash. Bags out of the back and then went back out front. And. She's famous for making the paper, we still have that photo, I have a lot of the suburban, they got it fixed, but yeah, we're very. Aware of the need to. Avoid bears.
I'm. Well, go ahead. No, I, I, I would still like to see you have a fence between. You, Hendricks, Phil, and Milk, that's just part of.
Yeah, my concern with that is it tends to take away from the beauty of the woods. I mean, this is a pretty area as it is. And we can certainly put up boundary markers, draw on that. But, um, we have deer that come through there daily, they'll come up to our cabin, grandkids will feed them. Uh, it consists of that, but, but, those are my, my personal reasons.
I think, Mark, you'll do well, now. I think, Bill, I think we gotta really be careful here on, on the next. I mean, I'm listening, I agree. But I think we need to take, we need to consider the totality of Colorado and swap.
Well, that's a good, that's a good.
It's a, that's out state. Okay. So, 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 in unites, from business, we're in and just. That we're fence lining each other, it's a fifty fifty. So, but I'm all in favor of making sure that somehow it's marked and marked well.
And frequently.
Yeah.
Yes, we're, we're, we're kinda talking.
Yeah.
So you get, I've hit the.
Yeah. You gotta be able to see from one marker to the next.
Right.
From one marker to the next one.
With all the trees, that would be probably every twenty-five feet, thirty feet, twenty feet.
If, if, otherwise. Doesn't make sense, because they're gonna mark a boundary, you gotta be able to see from one point.
Well, you know, at least from, you know, from one visible point to another visible point.
Right.
For sure.
Yeah.
Down, it, down what would be the boundary line, right, and then from that point to another point.
Yeah.
So to say that you gotta have it at twenty-five feet, we all, we all kill in some ways, you follow me? But, but to have, add that property line marked where a person can figure out, know if they're crossing the problem.
Because that's one of the biggest points that we get is, is trespassing on neighbor's property.
Just to keep it natural, you don't wanna see the, one of those old green boxes up there. By the whole people, they stayed out there, twenty feet, no. Just wouldn't want to see that.
But some, but somehow, just that line, totality of that line. You know, hunters are, if. Those of us that raise cows, for some reason, we have several, let, let's say we don't have a fence line put in, we own property line, right? But hunter is, is responsible to know whether we've marked it or not, and responsible for knowing if he's crossing the problem. In this case, you're just helping the people stay out of trouble by being able to mark it, you know, in some way, shape or form.
Understood.
Without having.
And you don't have federal relations with your neighbors.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, anything else from the final question? Not the way your motion.
Well, all the bills, oh, I move that we. Make a recommendation to the board of county commissioners to accept this application. With a few things, I won't forget everyone, but marking property. Making sure property wise. And then I would throw in, whatever Airbnb or, you know, whatever, that, uh. But if they accept the application, prove it, that you would then be associated with, just simply to, sure, kinda help regulate. You had some things on the. On the rules.
No, he, he took care of that.
He took care of that, so we don't need to make sure, okay. Anybody think of anything else I have?
I've got some other things. What? Um, that rules be changed because such a wooded area, no, no outdoor fire pit.
Yes, yeah, I remember that.
Oh, yes, that's, that's no, either covering or something, but make sure they get into that, they get their fireplace fire. Uh, the di, the natural diagram, a diagram in here of the property boundaries, and then by cover the natural markers. That they'll see out there. Uh, what about the number of renters? It would be limited to four.
Yes, don't change that application.
Rechange the application, and then a reflective sign address.
Hmm.
Cause we get, we, we had a BS word, was that, you were counting, there it is. So no outdoor, so, so I, and I've got contact information in the rules.
Yes.
Did that cover?
I think so.
Yeah.
So we got, I got contact information and rules, reflective sign interest, no outdoor fire pit in the rules and no outdoor fire pit. Uh, diagram of property boundaries listed in your rules regulations, and then natural markers of your boundaries. Separating the properties. Where, where they can be, where they be visible.
I'm sure.
What's that?
I'm sure, did that include your?
Yeah.
That's.
Okay. Now.
I'll second you.
Okay, the move in second is. To recommend to the county commissioners to. Accept this, accept this application for an FDR. With.
All of these.
Let me convince them that. Okay, uh, all the neighbors, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Both. If the motion carries, uh, Bill, reasons.
I think the, the biggest reason that I, the biggest plus regarding this. With me is that your brother has invested interest in the property, lives very close to it, he's come to monitor.
Eric.
Uh, there's really not a much opposition, I have some concerns with the artesian well, but we, we addressed that and the septic, we addressed that. With the conditions, I don't cave with it because it's kinda, it's right off, right off the road there, it's, you're not gonna have a lot of traffic going down dirt road and causing issues. And so they pulled it right there, while it meets these conditions, that's the reason I'm saying, yeah.
Just. Uh, I voted aye because you seem to be very willing to work within the rules, um, I think if one of the people, we are, we are. Mike, I think it'd be a good use of his mother again. Okay, I voted aye, uh. I think because. And you may not have been a long-term resident, perhaps your family has been a long-term resident there. You're probably acquainted with all the neighbors. They're part of that, of the community. I think that's a good thing. Okay. Next one.
Okay, let's get in here.
Now, if you can come by.
This one then.
You need it, that's, that's, that's reflect the. The gift sent out for this particular.
Okay, my next period is for the. Line. Hopefully, the next allocation things.
Hi folks, uh, my name's Brian Klein, we said, and. Um, we, uh, we, well, first I want to thank the landowner and the county general for like a really thorough of the process. Uh, so it's, it's really good to be able to know that, the adjacent landowners, uh, ours communicated with and let, you know, whatever things is our. Um, we bought a, a small place, um, in Wazita Hills, um, that has one bedroom, one bath, and I, and there's bunkhouse as well. Not, not.
When we get, we get here. Please. I think it was good.
Oh, sorry, um, that, that should, the place showcases, um, what's the, and what it has to offer really well, it's got a nice large outdoor patio and a nice view of the San Bernardino, um, mountains. And we're able to go and visit it maybe once a month, um, once a little bit nicer, maybe once or twice a month, but there's a lot of time that we would like to be able to share with others. Like I said, it kinda showcases what West foot's all about, folks that are hiking and rafting, some, you know, any kind of things that they wanna do. It's just a, a peaceful, um, uh, peaceful, quiet neighborhood and something that we just really wanna share, that's really what it kinda comes out with. Um, main concerns that I had, like going into this was making sure that people understood fire risk, cause I sometimes wonder if people do understand fire risk. And so I made it really clear that, you know, no outdoor fires, um, the other concern is property ownership and making sure that folks understand. There's private property around, and so what, what I wanted to do is make sure that in the house rules and in the documents that are in the, in the property. It's really, you know, pretty thorough in terms of where the property lines are. Um, and like to not make sure that you're doing anything with, in terms of fire risk, there's other, there's other parts that are documented in terms of health rules. But it's really as simple as that, we, we're not able to use it a ton, but we'd love to share it with folks. So questions, oh, um, there, uh, one of the neighbors or one of the adjacent landowners bid calling and was concerned about trespassing, like to leave their properties on the other side of Good Hope Road. Not sure how much of the, you know, I mean, I have that, that worry as well in terms of like trespassing, which is why I wanted to make sure that it was well documented in the document, in the documents that we tossed, but also. There are, um, two lots, three point eight acres, and there were two lots that were, uh, officially made into one, um, with a, with a, um. Uh, I don't know, a couple years ago that and stuff, and it was well, um, marked, so on each of the corners, there's a pretty large size orange, um, flags on each of the corners of the lot. And midway, so there's eight, there's eight markers all the way around, so if people did wanna, like, you know. Try to figure out where the edges of the property were, it's pretty clear where they are, um, yeah. Questions? Oh, and my, my hearing isn't awesome, I can hear fairly well, I appreciate if you speak up, just to make sure I can hear the questions.
I do. I have a.
Yeah.
I think you have a bunkhouse.
Uh.
Is that right?
Hey, say that again.
Bunkhouse.
Bunkhouse.
Yeah, bunkhouse, yes.
Is it permitted?
Um, hmm, I don't think so. Um, it's, it's like a ten by ten, like I think it was just under the size that needed to be permitted, we, we bought it in June, uh, this, June of last year. And my understanding is it didn't need a permit at the, at the time, but yeah, it's not heated, it's just, it's really literally got a queen size bed in it and. It's nice, but it's not, you know, it's not part of, it's not the one bedroom, one bath, it's just a, yeah, so.
Doesn't have electricity?
Go on.
Doesn't have electricity?
You know, it, it does actually have electricity run to it, um, there's like a fan in it, it has lights, and there's a really low one, cause it's a solar, it's solar. Um, so we try to make sure that we're not utilizing too much electricity, um, there is a small heater in it, but I don't think that anybody's really used that, but you could use it. And it does have a fire extinguisher. But it's really just a door and it's, like I said, I think it's like a ten by ten building.
I think that this application did not be considered because of the. Illegal bunkhouse. I think that ought to avoid the application, believe them.
Okay, uh.
So, I don't know, we gotta discuss that.
In, in section nine, four, ten, one, two, B, under specific requirements. Number four said bunkhouse and accessory characters cannot be rented as, as FDRs.
A bunkhouse can only be on thirty-five acres. Or more, it must be permitted. It is against Colorado state law for anybody to occupy an accessory building overnight.
Okay.
Um, that is not connected to a, any type of structure that's trying to be occupied overnight, it must be connected to a septic. And I did not.
Yeah, it's not.
Um, that I'm aware of, and we've never gone out, have you, do you know if there's any state electrical plumbing tunnels for that? Particular structure stating that it's past inspection?
Well, there, there is an electrical run to it, but it's not, it's not, there's no, yeah, there's no septic and I don't know if there's any idea to have like septic for that. I don't think that was ever planned.
Is there a state electrical permit? Is there electrical permit that they're told with the state with the pictures?
Yeah, yeah, I, yes, all the electrical that was done, it was all, it, yeah, it was all permitted, there's a, there's a, it's a solar and battery, right? And that was pulled up to the bunkhouse, I don't know if the idea was potentially to have. I, well, there wasn't, because there's not, there's no room for a bathroom, there's no, you know, battery, it's not.
But it's shown as part of the rent.
It is. But, now we wanna figure that out, have we been able to go up to your property, have we been able to look at? I have no record of anything with that structure, although it's under an insurance fee possibly, I haven't measured it. Um, or some concern then.
Well. I don't think. I don't think we could touch that. At this time. Well, if we were, if we were to prove this and bunkhouse could turn it out, and I'll say in our face, would you, you know, um.
Yeah, yeah.
So under the present application. We all think that we could. Especially bunkhouse. What you just read.
So what is the correct procedure? Do we, in either application or just uh, the, if the application is flawed to that, I don't know what the proper procedure is. Okay.
Do you want me to die here?
Yes.
So Robert's rules, you can't make a negative motion. So someone happened to make a motion to approve it, but just doesn't get a second.
Right. We practiced that so many times, interest, we did it correctly. But then for future plan, then they can, they can take it. The applicants can then take it at that point and decide to revise or whatever the case may be about.
As presently, as presently presented, I don't think that we can deal with.
Right.
So do we.
So we have to make a motion. So I'll, I'll, I'll be the big white person applying here out here. So I make a recommendation that we accept that we recommend the board of county commissioners to accept this application.
Go ahead, a second.
I was like.
You did. Don't say. See, this is where we've messed it up. Right, no, they do.
Yeah.
So you have to go back and settle, you have to, you have to.
No, no, one, one second. It keeps us from making a narrative. Which we can't do.
So motion fails for lying in second.
Well, there was two or three that we got them all. Do you understand the process we just had to go through?
Uh, yeah, thanks, yes.
We, we can't make, so we can't accept this application. But we have to finish our business and we can't make a negative recommendation second above.
Sure.
So we have to make a recommendation to accept and then not get a second. So it dies out of line. So now it's gonna be just kind of back into your quarter.
Okay.
Because of what, bend me to take your job. Sorry. I just hope you folks.
No, thank, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Very hard question. Did you have the heard?
Uh, no, no. Thank you.
Okay, our next one is from this condo area for a short term rental event. Zone two, intergrade violence. Uh, I believe that this is. Oh, yeah. Get every name. Who is? Speaker, this, this application.
Yes, we're after being denied twice before, we've been renting long term. Uh, thirty plus days. Uh, we've been pretty much booked the whole time. It took a couple of medical emergencies and one person trying to scam us. Uh, other than that, we've been, I think our shortest stay was probably five to six weeks. Uh, we've had great, uh, tenants, uh, haven't had any issues within the neighbors. I've checked on them, make sure that we're, they're minding their business and minding their manners. Uh, next door neighbor, Mr. Anderson, is absolutely informed for us to have a short-term rental. He's next door. He can actually see the house from his house. He's the closest neighbor. We're sharing a dumpster, uh, the Greg's offered to us and three others are using their dumpster. So we're using that as well. Uh, we got a parcel box down there. If UPS can't get up to the house, if not, all their, uh, with the long-term folks, all their, anything else was shipped to my house, not brought to them. So uh, other than that, I don't think we've had any issues. None of my other clients in the valley have had any complaints that I'm aware of. So I, I try to keep a good tight grip on my tenants, make sure they follow the rules and so we don't have any problems. We want to be good neighbors and good stewards of the valley.
Okay, over the ready. Ready.
There were, we received four letters, um, of opposition. The first letter is from David Jensen. Big obvious, sorry. It's from Mr. Jensen. He is not an adjoining neighbor. He's two miles away. Has an out of town, um, out of county mailing address. I'm assuming they're not full-time residents. Their concerns were dust, road maintenance, noise, and increasing, increased liability to current landowners in the county due to possible accidents. Their concern was that road is impassable at times. Um, they're concerned of high risk of fire in the area and the impact on wildlife. The second letter is from Roby. They're an adjoining neighbor and they are year-round residents. Their concerns were parking. They had an issue in the past where a renter parked a semi truck and trailer along the shared road. They also had incident of snow that was plowed onto other property owners' land um, by past renters. Um, they're worried and concerned about preservation of the natural land contours and the vegetation and wildlife. The next one is from the Greg's. They are an adjoining la, neighbor. Um, they're, they are a year-round resident. Their concerns are increased traffic, road maintenance, trespassing on other's properties. Uh, they cited that Helix Property Management Co. of Colorado LLC was formed on the property on September twenty ninth of twenty twenty-three, which is a violation of the Coaster County zoning resolution. Their concerns about short-term rentals, they refer back to their concerns about short-term rentals in late December twenty twenty-three. Um, I'm sorry, I read that wrong. They're concerned they had a short, there's, they're concerned that there was a short-term rental in late December twenty twenty-three. Um, and I can speak to a response to that of Paul Kim. Um, they are, um, previously denied, they are previously denied STR. They have concerns about that. The location of this property is not conducive to short-term rentals. Uh, the next, the fourth letter is from Doffey, an adjoining lot neighbor. And they do have an out-of-county mailing address. Their concerns are trespassing, altering the characteristics of the neighborhood and road, road ma- maintenance.
Okay, uh, comment, comments from the audience.
I'd like to address the party if I could. Um, you know, this week, anyway, when we turn here and now, as the county commissioner knows, I've been here before on this particular property. Um, and I'm not going to go through and redo every single issue raised in the Greg's letter. I spoke with Roger and Marcy Gregg, who here on your behalf. Roger had a surgery today and could not attend. Um, but I just want to reiterate some of the major points that were raised in that letter, but also what we've been talking about all along. I think one of the reasons that Roger and Marcy mentioned that they had concerns that short-term rentals were happening is because if you recall, originally, short-term rentals did take place before an application was even filed. And then in, um, two thousand twenty-one, that application was denied. Then we had another application filed, which I spoke in opposition to, which was in the spring of twenty twenty-two. Now, on another note, I think the Greg's have tried to be, um, fair and, and show both sides of the situation. They say in their letter that the long-term rentals have been working. They're not in opposition to any long-term rentals. Uh, one of the reasons that has been working is because there's only been most of the time, one trip in and out each day. Which is what if somebody were residing on the property, they would be doing anyway, if they were working. So there hasn't been much traffic issue. They also say, fairness to the trium, that it has worked pretty well, which tried, they tried to be cooperative. Uh, there's been cooperation regarding sharing the dumpster. There's been cooperation regarding, um, the UPS box. Um, you know, on the road. But the same concerns come up, and I just want to reiterate those concerns. The Greg's cited in their letter, the three reasons that the county commissioner denied the short-term application in twenty twenty-two. Those same issues are still present here. Um, in particular, there's a violation of, uh, seven point nine E. Um, and in, in terms of the zoning laws. Um, with short-term rents, there are going to be more people using the property. There are going to be multiple cars. There's going to be increased traffic. And this is a road where Dr. Ned was toward the end of the road. Actually, that's right across from, you know, OB. Um, no one goes through that road because it's not a through road. It's rather narrow. It does take some maintenance. The maintenance has been performed by. So what we have is a situation where it's difficult to do snow removal. Uh, I've been informed by the Greg's that Roger just purchased another piece of equipment for his tractor at his own expense to do that road. Uh, there's increased traffic. The road is going to have to be maintained more often. It's going to create additional wear and tear on the road. And as mentioned in the zoning regulations, in the summer, it's just a busy season, you're going to have increased dust, increased noise. You're going to have safety issues because people walk the road and this is a road that meanders across some rather, rather large curves. Uh, all of those issues will be there if they're short-term rents. So we're basically asking the county commissioner, they, on the same basis as previously, to not approve this application. I want to add one more thing, just so you know, I think it had been mentioned that he said that there was a new analog seat room. I think the concern there was that the LLC was designed to work with short-term rentals and with either Airbnb or VRBO. And it was basically a red flag because this has happened before. Short-term rental has started before an application was approved. Mr. Young also said there have been no problems. Well, in, in the Greg's letter, they cite the fact that there were trespasses this summer. They referred over to the sheriff's office. There was also because of an outfitter that was a long-term renter, they were parking a trailer and, uh, I, 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 I think semi truck is too vague of a term, a tractor to pull a trailer. And, um, that was parked on the road at times. So basically, these issues keep arising. But this is not a new issue that's going to close the commission. On behalf of the Greg's, on behalf, on behalf of everyone else I've spoken to, the president today, and their local, to address the county commission, we're asking that this application be not approved. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question for you. Did you repeat which section of, of the zoning resolution?
Okay. So if, I don't know if you have their letter in front of you, but what it says, it says satisfactory evidence was presented that, that allowing the application would violate the provisions set forth in section nine point seven B of the zoning resolution. Nine point seven B. And I just read that section again today. It talks about increased, talks about increased dust. It talks about noise. It talks about other conditions which would change the character of the neighborhood. If you're, if you also recall, one of the things that was stated in the decision previously was that it would change the quaint residential na- nature of the neighborhood, residential character of the neighborhood. I would, I don't know if I want to use the word quaint. I would say it's going to change the peaceful and quiet um, condition of the neighborhood. And a lot of these owners have been there for a long, long time. The Greg's have been there for approximately twenty-five years. Uh, there are other owners that have been there a long time. They walk the road. They enjoy the quietness of the neighborhood. Uh, they don't want to have to deal with increased traffic and safety concerns on that road. Thank you. Any, if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to, to answer them.
My name is Anne Roby and I am across the street from the property in, um, in question, excuse me. Uh, can't really talk much longer. Um, there was none nice enough to read part of my letter on summarizing. The point that I really wanted to make with that is that of the four properties that are in contact with the questionable property, three of them have easements because of our concern for the presentation, the forest, the wildlife and so forth. It's not just for us. It's for the community. Because the community looks up the hill on the west side to see that whole area. And we would like to preserve that. We've had short-term hills in there where people go out to breakfast, out to lunch, out to dinners. And there's, there's not a lot of activity that they can go to. So pretty much what they're doing is going to town. And that is really almost too much traffic for that road. It's got a, oh, we could ask curbs that's in the shade. So when the snow melts elsewhere, it, it may melt a little bit, turns to ice, or it doesn't melt at all. And we're kind of concerned about what that would do to our, one escape route if somebody were to have a serious accident there. Not to mention the trees, they might knock down, the injuries that might occur. Um, for the most part with the longer-term rentals, they've been very, it's like having a neighbor. Whereas a one-week rental, they could careless. And that, well, there was only one exception to that. And that is people that were there for a while, but then decided to terminate their long-term rental for something else, for some reason. Also, there was a short-term rental, I'm sorry, all that there was. A short-term rental, they got lost. They went up to a neighbor's property to ask, we're looking for Paul or we're looking for five fifty, how do you? Well, how come you're there? Airbnb. We have a rental for the next two or three nights. So that was the window. I wish you'd take that into consideration. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Joseph DeVey, speaking on behalf of my wife and myself. If you allow me to start with an observation of your error. To say this is Dejau, although well again. You knew that this was coming. Uh, I would like to take you back to about two thousand five. That was the time period, two thousand four, two thousand five. When we purchased this property, it was a six to nine months process. Because we want to make sure that we, including our hopes and dreams, will fit the neighborhood. We clearly understood that this was the, uh, an area where we had access to our property courtesy of three neighbors who gave out a piece of their property for the road. It's, it ends in the root of South, so it's not that, it's not the, the sewer. We also joined several of our neighbors and after some negotiations, put our We also joined several of our neighbors and after some negotiations, put our the property on conservation easement. So, I do not need to belabor the point of what it means. The big piece of new information that I have to share is we had multiple incidents of trespassing on our property. The applicant's property, other than the driveway, uh, is pretty much a natural lawn of trees and so on. On our property, we have a couple, one well-maintained logging road and a couple other logging roads. And the court, uh, long-term rental on our trail camera, uh, sometimes walking yellow, sometimes walking with his white, sometimes walking the dark, the dark leash. It was a bother me, but it may bother the white light. Uh, and we captured this on trail camera and we reported it to the county county sheriff's office. And that was in the May and June timeframe. We filed a report early to the county and we accessed the trail camera pictures. The, a bit more detail about this trespassing accident. Uh, no, because the, the renters crossed across the road, not at the crute of south, but through their up hills. So at that time, there were no, no trespassing signs supposed to, yes, there are no trespassing signs on both ends of the road. But not, but not at that time, uh, midway. We had as that, but the property line, although it's not always sponsored to mark, but we have a team post every twenty-five yards. So, it, it was not accidental. Uh, that was a, it, it's very clear that you leave the jungle and you enter a reasonable domain. Uh, we, we marked, put on, put on some additional signs. I consider short-term rentals pretty much as water guests. A better renter might, might result in less traffic than, than, than SBR. And this is not appropriate, uh, in my mind, or mine, for this small neighborhood uh, that is abated from county rule, quite a, quite a ways. And each grant, when the county commissioner grant the SBR license, that means, uh, uh, nobody has any control over how it's going to be, the gas exchange. And, uh, why, I don't think either party is really happy. We believe the current arrangement that, that allows long-term rentals, uh, but no short-term rentals is a, is a reasonable compromise between legitimate interest of Dr. Rubik's jungle and basically the neighbors. I, I cannot help but notice that Mr. Paul, living in Kansas, made the effort to show up for this hearing and, and make this case personally. And in this case, Dr. Rubik's jungle did not even join me because of why, why it's moving for Dr. Rubik to be able to see him. So, in summary, we would like to ask you to re-approve your petition from two years ago. And however you accidentally technically recommend to the board of county commissioners to decline this application again. I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We have to address some of those, yes.
As far as the semi, I was asked if it would be okay if I could park at the end of that cul-de-sac since there were no other homes down there. I said, well, as long as it's a very short time, he was just storing until he could get it down to their ranch. This is the first I've ever been in trespassing. Uh, no one's contacted me at all about anything. As far as the snow removal on your place, you, uh, Anne called me one day. I don't want to use that guy.
It happened again.
I'm sorry?
It happened again.
Did?
Yeah. It comes straight down the driveway from Tucker.
Okay, so, he was supposed to, I can take care of that, anyway. Uh, I'll take care of that. Um, but, uh, as far as the December short-term rental, those were friends of mine that were looking at the property because the folks had been there for three months. They had a six-month lease. Uh, they had to leave. His wife was pregnant, newly pregnant, and she could not deal with that elevation. Uh, they were looking for her grandson, who's newly engaged, to looking to see if that was a possibility for them to have a wedding venue in one to two years. They went up and looked at the house and said, if we get a short-term rental, you're not going to rent it. If not, uh, yeah, a couple of years coming. And you can stay there for a month or an hour long after that. But that's what that was. They got lost, kind of, they were following me. They were too busy sat sitting and not paying attention where I was, and I left them. Anyway. Uh, as far as the property lines, if they don't have the OnX app, I download it for them and print off the property line. So they have an actual picture, satellite picture of the property line, which are the, the straight. If they do, if I'm told about it, then I can handle it, but if I'm not made aware of anything, so. There's nothing I can do on that. Anything else?
Thank you. Plenty of information.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what's wrong with a long-term rule?
We can't make there's much money, obviously. Uh, we can only rent it for, we're going to raise about seventy-five dollars a night. Uh, that, I want to address that as far as also to the traffic that they're, they're shady. Uh, with long-term rental, they start coming in at, every day. Uh, with short-term rental, we're looking at, you know, I think we're going to do a three-day minimum. Uh, that's to be reviewed later. Um, and more than likely, and the, the STRs that I'm managing right now, it's very slow. Um, I've got six right now. I don't have anybody in any of them. Uh, we're, we're dead, absolutely dead right now, uh, part of this economy. But if, on average, if we are renting three times a month, at anywhere from three to four days at a time, which is about average, uh, you're going to have a week or two in there where nobody going up there, except for me and my wife wanting to claim. So other than that, there wouldn't be anybody there. Uh, as far as, and that's part of what I tell everybody, this is a dirt road. Your guests here drive very slowly. If you can see a dust cloud behind you, you're going too fast. So that's why I try to let everybody, even my long-term folks, I said, people walk this road because I have the same problem. My little road will keep sick. We have people that slide up and down. So that's a very big issue for me as well. And I think we've been very compliant with the ordinance, uh, trying to follow it to the letter. And I believe the LLC issue, I believe that's now a current requirement for STR to have a some type of protection. Okay. That's where the LLC came from, and that's very common practice in anybody. That protects the business, the, the homeowner. In case somebody falls, they have a, a company, company, so to speak, to protect them so that it's not a personal liability.
It's not required.
Okay.
Not category requirement, I don't know. And VRBO is there.
And it may be through them, so.
Anyway, my question is, what circumstances have changed since the last time you were here for a short-term rental?
Uh, we've tried to comply with everything that the, the rentals or the, the permit requires. He's trying to get it to where he can rent it out, max money, and then have some time for him and his family to come and use it as well. At this point in time, he's not able to do that because he has to rent it for the entire month just to break even. And that leaves no time for him. Uh, because he's on a, uh, he's a traveling anesthesiologist, and he goes to Denver, and when he's in Denver, or Quavo likes to come here. He hasn't been able to do that in a year and a half, two years, so. And quite frankly, I'm for it because it makes more money for me. So.
Another question, sure, the planning commission.
Uh, we went up there, snow, we got, uh, we got stuff. I had to help us back out.
He's a very good backstabber.
I'm backstabbing. Uh, I did notice the road, and it's, it's a narrow road. And if you, if you were up there on that road, you didn't know, and they could live there full-time, or, or I mean, you're going to be able to do, I don't know how you got to rent it out without straighten off the snow.
Oh, we keep it plowed. When we have people there. In fact, that big tree right at the slip, I'm trying to get in that ticket tree out because that will, uh, give you some sunshine on that, most of that loop right there, uh, which will keep it melted, so we don't have to get in there with a tracker.
It ju- it just seems like a very, I mean, you're going there for a reason. You go down that road. There's no reason to be down the road unless you're going for a destination. With, with the long-term, and, and I come, I mean, my background, I own six hundred apartments. So I know about long-term rentals. About short-term rentals. And the reason that I do do short-term rentals is because, because of the frequency. For the long-term rental, you can get some type of control on individual if they're out of control, if that makes sense? If they're giving you trouble, you have, you have something to, to kind of settle them down or develop a relationship with them. Or develop something because you get to know them over a six-month, if you so over a year, this. A short-term rental, they're in and out. There's no time there. You don't know who you're dealing with, even though it's an application because of VRBO or Airbnb, but there, you don't know who that person is in reality. It's, it's like calling someone on the phone, or once your soul spirit is gone. You don't know what's matter.
We do, we do vet the
Right, I know, I know there's vetting, I'm not saying that. You still don't know the individual. You can't vet a person's demeanor. You can't vet a person's attitude. You can't vet a person driving down that road. Say they're running late, it's ten o'clock at night, and they're coming down that high of a road. And they've never been down the road before, and they may be late, they want to get there, they're tired. And that's a very narrow, if I could see the issue that could come up, especially at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, just with somebody that's not used to that road. It is very scary in reality. And it's just, it's, it's been a very tight-knit community for twelve something years. Surprised.
But by the same token, if we do long-term rental for the nation plus, it kind of has no, so.
That is correct.
You guys, you guys, you guys have some power.
But you also have an individual, individual that's there for thirty days. You forget to know me, you forget to know me. There's more than a weekend. Weekend, you get, you have no time to know me. It's just the end of that. And that, that, that's a different type of neighborhood than what you're seeing in these other short-term rental areas that are being completed. And that, I mean, that's, that's where I'm going to be up there, it's kind of a shocker, I'll see what, why they were having these concerns.
And we'd be willing to kick in a little more, uh, as far as, because we're at the end of the road. And I noticed the Greggs in their letters, they said they were joining, they're at my way. Easy, at the closest. Uh, but we would actually be more willing to kick in a little more on a H O A dues. Four overwinds. We have no problem with that at all.
Thank you, Daniel, for the question. Bill.
I want everybody to remember Mike's little speech minutes ago. And I voted the planning commission, recommend the county commissioners to accept it from there.
Care of a second. There's no second. But I did a second motion. Yes, that's on motion, we can have. Motion fails, but I have to say. Now, it can also be done in the provision section. I mean, it can also happen in the business section. Okay, there are a lot of notes. I vote, no, the motion passed. So I'm going to do it, yeah, that's a good.
Daniel, specifically, we need to know why.
Okay.
They're asking, we can't ask them.
So.
I know, because I don't know.
I don't usually, but I do some.
Well, thank you, I mean, I find you, but no, there's no, 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 it doesn't even go. If it was done the other way, then there are reasons, then what do you do? But we want to furnish the contract reasons, then we'll need to, there's nothing to go.
Black, physically, a little, a lot of black. There's noise, okay, but just, it, it, it happened.
Okay, then basically, then it's not true. All right, yeah. Nice, uh.
I don't know if I was able to give everybody the package. There is a package that I keep on the road. I'm not going to run too very single numbers out of the book, but I'm going to cover the main order of what I work for. Just as a note, um, if you look at the yearly maintenance briefing, you've seen much of the time that all all I know is anticipating and never, you know, that's a issue with climate. We have, we have hit a low wall in the summer, it could drive back under the fall, so. Um, so where we did see the reduction in our permits was with the non-wellings or an accessory building. As you can see, we're at two hundred thirteen, and twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three, we're at one eighty-seven. Um, mainly who comes in and applies for an accessory building is a lot of our locals. I can hope that's the economy affecting the conditions to their properties such as a barn or, um, you know, kind of accessory building. That very well could be, I'm just guessing on that. Overall, our total numbers are pretty even, we were at three twenty eight for total permits. And twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, we were at three oh three. Uh, the next, the back page, um, just running through the financials. Our total income for twenty twenty two was three hundred and eighty one thousand five hundred and forty one dollars. Our total income for twenty twenty three was six hundred and forty four thousand five hundred and fifty eight dollars and fifty cents. And the difference in that income really lies in, um. The use tax, and I'm going to go through a little bit, we discussed use tax in my report today. Because I think there's some misunderstanding about the use tax, and I want to kind of explain how that benefits our citizens. Um, opposed to just charging them that use tax, because it sounds like a lot of money. Um, it is a lot of money, but it's a lot of money that was being taken out of our account and not collected by them, that was being paid, but paid at a different account most of the time. So the next, uh, fifth, may I have a lot of the room? Say that again, may I have a lot of the room? Yes, sir.
Those three were, uh, technically use tax here. What are benefits? Are we getting the buck? We just, uh, donated, uh, a whole lot of money to the county this year. Like, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something. And is there any benefit to the people that live here from that money?
Um, Bill, I can't do that myself, I don't have, um. I don't have say over where the money goes, I know that the money that we collect goes into the general fund.
Right.
Um, it goes to support my department's budget every year. I, and that's not near that amount, so I, I can't tell you where's that money goes specifically. That would be a, a question for the commissioner.
I didn't expect you to know the answer to that, and what the commissioners do with it would be nice to know. They've got, how much did you budget last year? What was your projection for revenue for this year?
I believe my budget, I don't have it in front of me, and I don't want to quote it for a specific number and it be inaccurate. But it was pretty much what I, what we made this year, they did not increase it.
Oh, that, well.
We don't see growth, this year we see a big increase because of the use tax.
So did you project that much growth in the use tax at the end of the year? Or did you just go with what we had that year?
I, I was fairly new to my position, though it was, I projected it slightly higher, knowing that the use tax is going to make an impact. But it was not to the amount, my goal, we almost made the personal, the department goal that we had for now.
Yeah.
Um, we came very close to that, but I did not budget this large of a amount. To have that.
I, I don't think that we bring it on you, I just. Would like to see some positive results.
So what would private best thing to start with? You probably bet there, we're around.
That's okay.
But what will change is made here out of this use taxes? Is this one contracted, you go, go uphill to another county, buy material, they collect tax down there, right? So now, when they go down and do that, they have to pay that tax here?
Correct. If I come in and apply for a permit, a building, a dwelling permit. We ask them upfront, and they have to fill out in the application for their permit, how much their expected building costs are, what their estimates are. And I'll be real honest with you, I don't blow nickel and dime anybody and say, hey. I, I think you're building cost was three hundred thousand in your home, too. If I walk out there and it's a million dollar house and they only gave me a hundred thousand dollars in building materials, yes, I'm going to question that. And I would sit down with them, go through that. For the most part, you know, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from our residents when we explain the process and why we're doing what we're doing. The, um, revenue service told me we were crazy not to collect the use tax at the point of sale, and the point of sale is at the time that they need come in, they purchase their permit. So, um, I'm going to skip on to.
To answer your question, my biggest issue I've had is, is I go in and I'm, I'm going to have forty thousand dollar materials, I have to tell her I failed when I do the work. I pay it P and Z dollars. Now, if I go to Home Depot or Lowe's in Quetlo or somewhere and I buy something, I forget to take that two percent per tax and they charge it, yeah, that's, that's the only bad part, but that's my issue.
And we tell. We tell our contractors, hopefully, we've told you this, suggested they can take a picture of it with your cell phone. Who doesn't walk in someplace without your cell phone ninety percent of the time? So that's been helpful, Lena had that idea, that's.
Then they're not charged in only.
If they are, then we've given them, um, a letter, it's basically the policy where the revenue service is suggesting that everything be paid upfront at the time that the permit is purchased. We give them that, um, if they have any concerns, we tell them if you have run into any opposition, to call us. The only place that we know of, and I don't know the name of it, and I wouldn't mention it anyway, is a local cement company. And they're just refusing to honor it.
Home Depot had an issue with the first time I went in there. They called the board office guy, straight, they're, they're in touch. And they had it in front of my mind.
It's, it's been a good, it's been smoother in the process, changing that process than I anticipated it.
So what we've been doing before this got shored up, basically, there was acts that should have been coming to this camp. I mean, this is probably one of the world question, but. But it was all else. Just because of the process that you're doing this.
Yes.
Correct.
I have, I was putting away all of your. I agree. For a while. Yeah. Well, I'm good. It would be nice if you could tell commissioners that when you give them that. It would, uh, it's terrible, it would be nice if you had something that the commissioners told you they were able to do with the money that was collected when they're giving this deal to the people that come in from.
I believe that's very little opposition, we're telling it's tough unless people.
I know, I'm, I mean, I understand that you're coming there. I, I, I think too much. Of commissioners, because.
Well, just manage all officials and other huge seller history.
Yeah.
You think they're going to give any of the back to the people or they don't figure out a mouse, but.
No, they're already.
And they're always.
And they're, they're, they're increasing their options, we have more people being hired positions, but they don't need their. That's what happened. Dorothy needs maybe one person, maybe two, part time and full time person to police this area. That's what she needs, and they're not giving that to her, and she's in one great money. And it's, it's ludicrous, I suggest we go show up to the commissioners, but I hope we all P and Z office. But I'm just telling, and he's hitting the baby, but it's sad because they're taking that money and they're making their job easier, but they're not making your job easier. That's what they're doing, and they're creating more of the opposite. And they're trying to funnel people to take the hit, so they don't have to take, that's what they're trying to do, one of them, that's what they're doing. It's sad. That's what, you know.
Yeah, I can't. So the next, um, little graph that I put together is just showing you how much it's two hundred and thirty six thousand four hundred and seventy one dollars and fifty cents that we kept in our town, instead of it being spent down the hill across the alley and in different county, um, it stayed in our town. The next one, um, is just a little chart. Answering why we, um, it's a benefit for us to collect the use tax at the point of sale. Um, Custer County charges two percent use tax. So if someone were to come in and they had fifty thousand dollars in building materials, they, we would charge them a thousand dollar in use tax. Same thing, if they went to Fremont County, it would charge, they would charge them, they would go out of our county. Um, they, if, if they bought it in Fremont County, and we hadn't already collected it upfront, they would pay twelve hundred and fifty dollars in use tax. The savings of two hundred and fifty dollars, not much, but it might buy somebody, um, cement for insulation for their home. Um, Quetlo, it would be eighteen hundred and fifty dollars and savings of eight hundred and fifty dollars. So, uh, my point of putting this together was to help you guys and the public understand that yes, we're collecting that sign, you know, we're saving them some money, too.
All right, so simple math, we're two percent Fremont County is two and a half percent. So I go down to home for. He goes, because I'm a contractor in Oklahoma. He goes down, he's already paid his use tax here. He goes down, they charge two and a half percent. Well, for sure, he doesn't have to pay the two percent, once he shows a little deal on the phone, but he's already paid. Does he have to pay another half a percent?
He only has to pay the two point nine percent state tax.
Really?
Yeah.
So the use tax, they can't, even though they're two and a half percent, they can't, they can't go ahead, missing one ounce.
Yeah.
Now, because it's a county, it's, it's put a county that is going to be used in, guys, it would be purchasing.
The issue is you have to go to the protest, you cannot go check out a calendar. They'll go around hitching the bad, they don't want you like you're nuts, you know, you can't pay the two percent. You have to go to the protest at Lowe's.
And they're getting, the regular cashers are getting much better, so I haven't had any negative feedback in quite some time.
Must be my personality.
The next, um, document that you have in your little packet, um, is something that Delana and I are putting together. We are going to start publishing in the paper. I will do it in February, I'm trying to decide if I want, I don't want to over commit. But we're going to start publishing with some little, um, ideas or suggestions, um. Some best laid plans, if you will, to kind of start educating the community on planning and zoning. And giving them some suggestions and ideas on how to do things, and we're going to start out with this three that I think I have three in your packet that we put together, um, so just, oh, I'm starting. My planning and zoning goals, I skipped ahead on you guys. So there's two, sorry, there's a few suggestion or two ideas of things that we're going to put in, um, the paper to start out with. I'm ready to start building and dwelling, and then give them the tips on building and dwelling, uh, what they need to do to get started, that, that their soil analysis, there's something done. Things like that, do they, do they have a, um. Do they need to go to road emergency to get a driveway, things like that, and bring it up, and so that they have documents to follow or something like that, to follow down that, take them down that cap and have a check office. And, and we'll keep, um, coming up with other ideas. We also have, are you ready to close your zone with us? One of the biggest things when we go out to our closings, number one, people, it's challenging to get them to send us their electrical and plumbing files from the state. That's one thing they have to do before we come out here. Do they have their reflective address? I'd like to make it so everybody has to have a reflective address marker, because then we know emergency services can find them. So we're just trying to put some things out to look at things from, have hopefully the public to look at things from a positive standpoint, looking at our department and what things we do offer and count. We're going to do some educational material around sephix, I'm hoping to run that out, roll that out in May. May is, I believe it's May, is, um, septic awareness month, so we'll kind of, it's through a local or a national organization that I belong to, they'll try to give some more education for myself and that department. Um, so as I know, since I will pass them to the public, and then form a, putting a, in the newspaper. Part of to see.
That whole identification with Ben, what is that? It's crap.
So.
There was a organization, crap. I don't, that's what I'm saying, seventeen, ten organizations. But, um. Sorry, Paul.
That's a really good organization there, um. Um, I'll have some changes in the future and kind of follow along with some of those, um, guidelines are from that organization, but I'll share those with you when that time comes. The next document that I have is in regards to the state landlord, and I'm going to summarize this packet, this packet, it is in regards to, um, the mining operation that is. I believe that the lease has been signed, that's what I've been told. They will be leasing some state landlord land, it's six hundred and forty acres across, just past, if you're going out to the landfill, it's on three twenty nine, seven, five, three twenty. Um, it's on Rosina Road, just past the landfill on the left hand side, or six hundred and forty acres of state owned land that they have leased to Tolareno, um, Porres, which is one of TZAC's company, I'm sure you all know that, he has, um, does, does business in the county already. He is going to open up a, um, mining operation there to extract rhino light, which is a derivative of what they use to make cement, I mean. And what a little bit of research I've done in regards to that. They are going to start out with, um. They can have a hundred and twenty acres at any given time that they're working on, but they can only have the open pit on the. That is what the lease is going to state. I have not got that from, we've received word that from my contact at the state for us to set up a, um. S T R application meeting with Keith and myself, anybody else who would like to join that. Um, this is inside, if I hear back from them, then I'll get a hold of Keith and I'll set a meeting with them.
Well, they're, and they're, they're, they're talking the, between their, their final explanation work and mine planning. And it's going to take twelve to twenty four months.
Correct.
To get that done.
Well, sorry, they can stop on, yeah.
Okay. This, this mine would be in the northwest corner, that section. Just toward the west, or just across the landfill, or, or it's going to be a mile to the north. Be clear, we're here Silverfoot Land and County.
Oh, okay, that one flat.
And I'm going to need the dirt. Right, and I'll be, so there, and they've already got a mine on Silverfoot Land and County.
Oh, I don't know.
And anyway, that's the way they're thinking about going out, going in and out. Oh, through Silverfoot Land and County where they've already got an established road. Yeah, they don't have to build another one.
Is that a three forty one?
Got a road, three forty one. No road there.
No road.
But it's strictly, that's all belongs to one person, Silverfoot Land and County.
So they're not going to use a roller road?
No. According to this, it says they're not going, they're going to use, I mean, the property that they're going to mine is right against Silverfoot Land and County, it's within a mile where they're already mining. And if they extend their road mile, they're going to be right there. So I build another road all the way to those here road.
Has there been public hearing on that?
Oh, yeah, there will.
Good.
It'd be nice if they had frozen ponds. I mean, it's got a pro.
Well, I mean. Actually, it, it says all the things that they have to do. According to the state. Um, it doesn't say what else we can make them do.
Well, I know.
But they're going to be, I mean.
Like there to care on land, where, where the, where's all the water flow go from this mining and all that kind of stuff?
Oh, it's good, I mean. So that's in there, so that's a good. I mean, some of that's in, some of that's in here.
But the state from that.
The state permit is gonna cover a bunch of.
Yeah.
Uh. But, I mean, they're just gonna be in one corner of that entire six quarters. And it's gonna be diagonally across from three eighteen.
Okay, three eighteen. For how long?
We need.
For how long before they dig all that out and they have to move?
Well, they're not gonna, I mean, they only entitled a hundred and twenty acres. In that corner.
But then they have to go back to the state or?
They have to back to the state at least once.
Okay, which doesn't come to bear with.
But it would come back to here because it wouldn't be an amendment to their plan of use permit. But the state would have to rent the more ground first. And some of it's gonna be, you know, I mean, they have finished that for eighteen years.
Right.
To make sure what they're gonna do, how they're gonna line it, all that kinda stuff. So I mean, we're ways, we're ways off from. But, I mean, them not using Rosita Road would be a good thing.
Well, that, but I'm also looking at the, and this is a subject of public hearing, all that dust is gonna go up in Rosita Positions.
Well.
Cause for that, providing winds around the west. And that's gonna blow straight into us.
Yeah, and I don't know what their dust control program is on their other mining sites.
Well, they don't have a water.
They don't have that.
The water? That's the only way you can break the dust is uh, cause of washware. We got that water, isn't it?
They could drill the well.
Yeah, they might take my water.
Oh, well, I mean, that would be the one thing they'd use it for, yes. I don't know how they're getting the dust in their road.
Does, will the public have a chance to sway or counsel everybody to just approve it?
Yeah.
So, help me understand. Because of the zoning account. In agriculture and mining. Not that I'd all of that say, but so just, I'm kind of very interested in that. Where do we come in and put a special use permit?
Well, because. All, all our, all our zones are only, only defined for agriculture and residential. Mineage is not allowed.
Oh, it's not, okay.
We never, we, I mean, we usually spend use permits for every gravel.
Okay, alright, well, that makes me feel better. I just stopped wanting this part of it.
No.
Oh.
Now. Hello.
Mining is not, mining is not used by.
Good.
Uh, Keith, how does the? There were mining districts a hundred years ago. And I, I think those, are those districts still in existence?
Yes.
And does that supersede everything?
Hmm, no. It doesn't. Because there's still subjects of local permitting and such, and state permitting. I mean, the, the mining districts didn't used to have to understate permits, now they do this.
As a, as a state can, that could be retroactive? Is that, well, if you have an old mine, it's probably.
Maybe, maybe you're gonna, well, it did.
That's what it is, but a new mine, yeah, okay, okay.
Then you follow the.
Yeah.
Mining Regulation Act or whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah.
So you gotta get your permit through the state.
And shop, maybe.
Just like the landfill does.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, so if you're gonna expand it, you gotta go back to the state and say, I wanna expand my permit. I'd be able.
Yeah.
But I mean, they've got some restrictions in there that I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see where the mine is gonna be, that it's not gonna be on the. On the southeast corner. Where they buy the three eighteen.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be clear on the other corner. Right next to, I mean, it, it actually, they're, they're accessing into Silverfoot.
You gotta go right down the street. Well, I, I think that's a great.
Yeah.
Or they come out on all this. Because they're going, because they're too low, they can't play that good.
One day, it's their city, so they're gonna, I mean, they'll just extend that over. Because they've already got agreement with that landlord, go that road.
Will they, will they come out and buy a cemetery?
This other.
I've been saying, Rock Hall is coming up, Rock Hall of Peace.
Yep, they're gonna come right down that, right down Hill Street, right down those cemeteries.
Oh, then come by Willie's and.
Uh-huh.
Been right here about Pete's and that, that's your mother in law.
Yep. And all of them are mountain clear. Almost right to Silverfoot.
Yeah, I listen.
You know that part. We, but. For the county, I mean, for them to extend the road and go that way. They're not gonna beat up Rosita Road, they're not gonna.
Yeah.
Any more road than what they're beating up now.
We'll see how long their paving job lasts.
You wait.
We'll see how long their new paving job lasts.
Stop crying.
They're leaving the paving, oh, the, the Jake's paving job?
Yeah.
Cause they're all in Canyon.
Yeah.
And we're, we're trying to go down.
And, and they'll be hauling, well, they'll, they were supposed sixty-nine, well, they're up to ninety-six.
And they're sixteen trucks coming out now.
A day, sixteen more?
Sixteen trucks coming out.
At least.
Perfect, that, that's from the mine horses.
Yeah, uh, really. My counsel is left aside that, I mean, it's non-stop, and they're starting early.
Yeah.
And uh.
Well.
And they're going to get one.
And, and guys harder and.
Yeah. And if the county had a, that would have enacted a severance tax fifty years ago.
Yeah.
They'd be a walk heaven.
We could bring more people than bureaucracy.
Yeah.
So anyway.
Yeah.
That's, that's where we're going, down the road.
And this, this thing is scheduled for?
It's not scheduled for any time yet.
Not scheduled yet.
As soon as they come in and apply for a permit.
And it'll be.
Or be out, set down a meeting with them.
Yeah.
Get their, their plan, I mean, they're gonna have to have a plan where they're gonna start planning. You know, give us the specifics of how they're gonna get in and out of there.
And it'll be a two meeting.
Their drainage plan. All of that.
And we'll, we'll be detailed.
Oh, yeah.
And, and they've done this a lot.
Oh, yeah, they know what they're doing.
They know what they're doing.
It brings me to a question, I think. We proposed, I think, last year about, or it was proposed about the S U Ps. That some of them just go away and never know about it, they're still on the books. Is there, was there anything ever ever proposed to the commissioners to do, like a once a year or twice or every two years? Go back to each S U P and see if it's still applicable, see if it's still following rules? Because I see S U Ps all the time, they're not following the rules that we're setting out.
Well, I think that's one thing that was suggested in the workshop, one of the workshops, but I don't believe that that was a recommendation. That was agreed upon with you guys to pass on to the commissioners. Cause I don't think that would be a bad idea personally, do I have the manpower to go out every year and look at it? But I think there's a definite need.
They have the manpower throughout here, it does. They will just give you a problem.
Or something, he, he was kind of, they came in and had to be quiet.
Well, okay, it's a little.
One last thing, make this quick.
I just forgot.
Okay. The last document that I gave you guys in the packet is just um, an update on regulations by the. By DOLA um, to regulate the structuring of a more building of tiny homes. What's considered a tiny home is one or two feet or less. Um, and they're now requiring a lot of the same requirements as they do a mobile home. So even the foundation has to be marked inspected by the state since we're not a code county. If we were code county, I will be doing those inspections. Um, they're also um, making sure that manufacturers that are bringing the tiny homes into our community or, or. Certified with the state of Colorado. So that when I go in, basically what's gonna change for us, when I go in and do my final walkthrough on a tiny home, I will be looking at two things. If it's done by a, a permanent foundation and not on wheels, I would look for a metal and safety harness on the foundation. To make sure that the state is inspected as well as under the kitchen sink to make sure that. All of the insights of the structure is up to code. Not that we would have to go out and. Inspect it throughout the building stages, it's, it's already inspected by the state since we're not.
If anybody wants to see one, there's one now called Bulge. Right before you hit the turn three. It's right set and right out there, it's pretty large. I don't know if they remitted it that in hot, did they bring it up?
No, I, I would. I share with them some consideration to become. Whenever tiny homes. All the taxes, how much manpower would we put into? If all around the world, this would have been beaten.
Those are incredible.
I'm grateful. I'm just.
I'm.
Okay.
This happens. Now, this happens.
See.
I don't think they're.
We just sell the head end.
Where the other, they, they. Okay, well, that did. Okay, any further business now?
Oh, I'm a little jerk.
Yeah, I have one question.
Okay.
What is our bill's uh, topic? Since it wasn't, there was no, so.
Your deal is to.
The deal, Suzie?
It's actually to the B Z A.
Okay. Frank, all these questions, I heard, I don't get why I make phone calls.
But hopefully, no, we should do.
Yeah.
But they did not make a vote, I don't feel that to them as well. It didn't happen.
With the B Z A.
Yeah, I'm a little jerk.
I think, I think they're following. All the papers, say aye.
Aye.